We are on. Good evening, everyone. This is the planning board meeting for January 6th, the first of 2025. And if you saw us on TV a minute ago, what we were doing was just signing some subdivision plans for Earl Bunting. It was a quickie thing to take care of first. I'm asking Grace to sit in tonight for Victoria, who is unable to come. So our first agenda item is Mr. Morales for an auto shop on Dugan Farm Road. If you'd like to go to the mic and basically tell us. Did he submit? Oh, I got it right here.
Everybody's got it, I think, haven't you?
I don't.
Does anybody have a copy of Mr. Dugan's?
Didn't I pass them out last week?
No, I don't have. I don't think anybody has it.
I did, because I picked mine up from her office.
Okay.
Oh, my God. I didn't. Oh, gosh. Am I at fault? I don't even have one.
Do you have them in the office?
Yeah, but I don't have a key to get in. I've lost my key.
Oh, you've got to be kidding me. Well.
Oh, wait a minute. Wait a minute. Wait a minute.
Unlike you not.
Joyce, I only got one here.
I've got one. I picked one up.
Does everybody, anybody got one up there?
No.
I thought all of them were distributed last week. That's why I didn't.
Well.
Oh, God.
Oh, well, then if you do, I must have one, because I don't get rid of things.
Why don't you look at it? Would you look at Grace's with her? Or mine with me? I've got one here.
Okay. I do know.
Oops. I can get my glasses on here.
It's pretty cut and dried.
So basically, after all this teeny bit of confusion here, what? Mr. Morales, am I pronouncing your name correctly?
Yes.
Thanks. If you could just give us a brief view of what it is you want to do. What happens is that we, you've submitted your application, paid your fees, and we will accept your application tonight. Craig has ensured that you have all the information you need. And then in two weeks, we'll hold a public hearing. And you submitted your, did you, did he submit his abutis? I don't see it.
I believe so.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, he has.
Yeah.
Joyce, I checked today. Two weeks is a holiday.
Uh-oh.
So we, I've been given permission to have the meeting on Tuesday night if you want to.
Oh, all right.
Instead of Monday. It's President's Day, January, January 20th.
Two weeks from tonight is the 20th, so that's a holiday. So is it okay with you guys if we meet the 21st on a Tuesday? Any objections?
I'll be silent.
Pete will not be here, but we can still have a call. All right, so instead of being Monday, the 20th, we'll meet on Tuesday, the 21st, and you'll be on the agenda at 7:00.
Okay.
And what happens is that Donna sends out letters to all the abutis that you submitted, and they can come or not. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. It's a whatever. And it's a public hearing, so if anyone has any questions or concerns, et cetera, they can address them. It's important that you be here.
Okay.
To be able to answer the questions. And then we, 99% of the time, we vote either to approve or not approve on the night of the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay? So if you could just give us a brief overview of what it is you plan to do.
So basically, I'm just trying to open a repair shop at my home. Mostly it'd be mobile, but sometimes I have to do big jobs like engines and transmissions. I can't do them outside, so I'll have to bring them to my house. So basically, it'll be as a repair shop, fixing cars, brakes, shocks, and stuff like that.
So it's an existing garage?
What do you mean?
Do you have an existing garage? Is that what I heard you say?
Yeah.
That you're going to be doing this in?
Yes.
So you're not going to be building another building?
No, no, no.
Okay. Okay.
Using my garage, my two-bay garage as my shop, basically.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay. Here's parking on here, Craig, I assume.
So it's basically an expansion of what you've been doing mobily, but you're expanding it so you can do it out of your home as well?
Basically.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you're expanding what you're doing?
Yes.
Okay.
Greg, any question for you?
Sure.
Any of these bays attached to the house?
Yes, this garage is attached to the house.
So how about the firewall between the house and garage?
Well, that must have been done through the inspection. I don't know, when, how old is your house, two, three years?
Built in 2022.
2012? Yeah.
So it would be required?
Yes, it would be required that there would be a firewall there. I'm sure there was.
Oh, yeah.
Is the hole inside the garage you brought?
Yes.
It is.
Yeah.
It's probably all fire-rated anyway.
Yeah, there's a fire.
It's all fire-coated.
There's a fire door, too, on the garage's door.
Going to the house?
Yeah, yeah.
How many parking spaces do you plan on having?
Really, not much. More, no more than maybe six cars, basically. I have a little, I have a, I plan to have a little spot paved.
All registered cars, right?
Yeah, basically, they're all running cars unless the engine's bad, you know? Not, not any scrap cars.
Any other questions?
I like to make it as legal as I can, you know? Waste oil, I have people, you know, they pick them up, scrap metal goes to CIA, batteries and stuff like that. So everything's getting disposed the right way. But I just want, you know, if there's any, anything that I have to do to change it, then, you know, I would like to do that, you know, to keep it going.
About your oil, waste oil?
Yeah, so I have 55-gallon drums, and then I have someone pick them up for heating for the winter.
So you don't burn the used oil?
No, I don't. No.
Same with the antifreeze?
Same with the antifreeze, yeah. Usually I reuse the antifreeze unless it's bad. But I have a separate drug for antifreeze disposal, yeah.
Do you have a lift in there?
Not currently running yet until I make sure everything is set before I have a latrist and go wire it up and all that, yeah.
Did you have the house built in 2012?
I did, and we bought it purchased already built.
So it's pretty, the garage is pretty high to put a lift in it, then, huh?
Um, it's pretty high, yeah. For my size, I'm pretty short, so. So it works perfectly fine.
The ceiling's must be tall, and that's where you have? I would say. Either that or it's a short lift.
Just a little shorter, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so they sell lifts that are for short people, and then they sell for tall people, basically, heavy-duty trucks and stuff like that, yeah.
Do you have, I know probably one of the questions might be from, at the public hearing, would be if you have abutis that are close by? Do you have neighbors that are nearby?
Yes.
So that, one of the things we will probably expect and write into our notice of decision is that there'd be some kind of landscaping or fencing, so your neighbors don't, if that's a concern.
Yeah, I don't think I have any issues with my neighbors. Since I don't have any junk cars, actually just all in pieces everywhere.
You bought the lot from your neighbor, didn't you?
From our neighbor?
Yeah.
They bought it already built, the house is already built.
Oh, Joe didn't build that?
Well, that was Steve.
Steve Colby.
Oh, it's Colby's?
This is Dugan Farm Development.
Private road.
Any other questions? Yep.
What about tire disposal?
What was that, Craig? I didn't get it.
What about tire disposal?
Tire disposal?
Same thing. When I buy tires, they take them. Yep.
And the driveway's already paved, correct?
I paved it, yeah.
Okay, what we usually do is do a sidewalk, just so we can have a better visualization for ourselves. So any, does it make any difference to you when we might come?
No.
I mean, with the getting dark early, we usually do it on a Saturday, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Is that best?
I won't be able to make that.
What, what?
Some guys have already seen it, though.
Are you going to need Joel to chaperone you guys around? Because we do have a child in the alternate care. And I'll be working this Saturday, so he'll also be watching our child.
Who?
I don't know that we need a chaperone. We can, we can.
You're going to see, it's a house with a driveway and a yard around it. I mean, that's all you're going to see really on the outside until you walk inside the garage.
And on here, it depicts parking spaces, correct?
I don't see this drawing at all.
Well, what's that? I don't have my glasses.
Right there. There's that one, and then there's this one.
No, that one. That's the original.
Where would you be parking any tires that you were working on?
Right next, right next to where the stove wall is.
On the grass?
Yeah.
They'd be parking them on the lawn.
I see you have an area that says "grass." Is that in front?
Yeah, it's like a little stone wall, just a bunch of grass. It's like another acre on that side.
Okay.
There's no neighbor on that side, right? There is a neighbor on that side?
Across the street.
Across the street.
On your side, though, right?
Just the one temple up the hill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Would you be at the house when we get there with the child? I mean, if we had questions, could we knock on your door and ask?
Yes.
Okay. These, these.
Did you want to go inside?
Inside the garage?
Yeah.
Probably.
I won't be able to make it on a Saturday.
Well, could we do it on a Thursday or Friday?
I don't care. I'm available almost anytime.
Because most of us don't work.
Yeah, Thursday or Friday would be good for you?
At 3:00 or something?
You going to be in town?
What day is it?
Okay, well, would that be better than a Saturday?
That'd be helpful if that's the way I can watch the child.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Thursday or Friday better?
How about Thursday? Thursday, would that be work for everybody?
Thursday, sounds fine. Can you come on a Thursday or not?
This week, I'm a little up and I.
So, but it's not a big deal to you, right?
No.
Okay.
I mean, you guys.
I think, are they talking Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we talking Thursday?
That's in three days.
This is Thursday, the 9th.
At 3:00 P.M.?
At 3:00.
Because it gets dark after that.
Yeah. It really doesn't take us long. I mean, it's not as though we're going to be walking around hours on end.
No, no problem.
We'll be there 15 minutes.
If I can make a deal.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, sounds good.
Any more questions?
I'm glad it worked out better for everybody.
Any more questions? If that, is there a motion to accept Mr. Morales's application?
Make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Grace seconded, all in favor? Okay, so we'll see you this coming Thursday at 3:00 at your place. And then we'll see you on the 21st for the sidewalk.
At 7:00?
I mean, for the public hearing.
7:00?
At 7:00.
At 7:00.
Yep, yep. Okay?
That's great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in.
Have a good night.
Yep.
Thank you.
The night.
Tonight.
Oh, she's talking about the next meetings at 20:30.
So she's the owner, and he's?
The business guy.
Oh, so they're not?
They're not married, so.
They live together, though? Okay.
I know, so they have.
Isn't that a sin?
They have a child together, too.
Isn't that a sin?
In some people's eyes, I suppose it is, and others probably.
You're on camera.
You know, that's a very specific. Okay, let's, let's do the minutes if we could, and then I handed out, Craig, you had it too, what I call discussion points. I kind of like to start the new year off so that we're all on the same page. But let's do the minutes of December 16th first.
For those of you that have looked at the minutes, there were several changes I made on the last three paragraphs on page two. Quite a few typos.
Yeah, I copied off your second page, so. My only correction, then, is on the first page.
December 16?
Of December 16th meeting, yeah. This is under the Bunting subdivision.
Okay, what?
Of the second paragraph down. I guess when I read it, it says, open, you know, I opened the meeting, blah, blah, blah. Joe DeSanza of Dulles Ridge Road came forward. He is an abutter of Earl's property. His question was about Blaze Brewery. The chair told him it was all about a three-lot subdivision tonight. And to me, that sounded like I didn't explain to him what, you know, it sounds abrupt, but.
It kind of was. I didn't even hardly hear what he said.
Yeah, well, I.
He can calm it down.
No, no. What I would like added, if the board agrees, is the chair told him it was all about a three-lot subdivision tonight, and there would be a meeting to discuss the brewery when they submit their conditional use permit application. So I just wanted to let him know that we weren't just cutting.
That makes it much clearer.
Yes.
Cutting them off is sounding kind of crass. Other than that, I don't have any corrections.
I've got one, anyway. Maybe two, but mine is under the Bunting subdivision on the third paragraph.
Okay.
It talks about, he sold two lots two years ago, and then it just says he needs approval. I think for the sake of clarity, we put in there, finding of facts is that Earl Bunting sold two lots two years ago because he wants to, comma, because he wants to sell a third lot inside the five-year limit, it will constitute a subdivision which will require planning board.
You know what, Bob? I take shorthand, but you must have been going 250 words a minute.
I'm going to write it down for you.
No, you can just say it again slower, and I'll.
Okay, here we go.
I got "two years ago, comma, because."
Okay, comma, because he wants to sell a third lot inside of the five-year limit. It will constitute a subdivision which requires planning board approval. I think that makes it a little bit clearer.
Yeah.
I agree.
It will.
Constitute a subdivision.
Right.
Period?
And require planning board approval.
Right, period.
Period.
And now, everything after that, where it says it is not going to be a, I think everything from.
You want me to delete it?
I don't think you need anything from there, because the fact that Blaze is going to do this or that is immaterial to the.
It is immaterial to this.
So have that be the last sentence and take everything else off?
Take everything else from "it is not going."
Okay.
From there to the end.
Yeah, that's fine.
And I think we'd be all right. The only other one is a nitpicking one. It drives me nuts, anyway, so I'll bring it up.
Nitpicking, yeah. We can nitpick.
And that's under the first paragraph, the, under this Earl Bunting subdivision, the first sentence, Earl Bunting, owner of property of 187 Dulles Ridge Road, said two years ago. No, he didn't. He said it two weeks ago. So what we're going to do here, what I like, I understand what you're trying to do here. Let's see if we can change it to said that he sold two lots from his homestead two years ago.
Right, the years ago should be different.
I hear what you're saying, yeah.
Nitpicky, I know.
No, it's actually not.
He sold two lots?
Repeat what you said for her.
Okay, that, the, the new sentence will be Earl Bunting, owner of property of 187 Dulles Ridge Road, map, blah, 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 said, here's the new language, that he sold two lots from his homestead two years ago, period.
So you've just taken that two years ago, and you're moving into the end of the sentence?
That's all. And one final one. Under "other,"
Yep.
there was a quick discussion about solar farms, and then it says, Craig said that a solar, that a solar farm applicant came in to have the code enforcement, I'll sign a document. Should we identify, this is the question.
You know, that's a good point.
Should we identify that this is for the solar farm located on Secocas Ave? I think we should.
Is that the, we're talking about Tiedemann Farm?
Well, yeah.
One across the street?
The one across the street.
Yeah, that is pretty vague. Okay.
And I don't even know if it's even necessary, but.
It was.
I would just say, I would say the solar farm applicant on Secocas Ave, just to make it a little more clear.
That's even easier. Yeah, I like it.
So just add "on Secocas Ave," after the word applicant?
I could add more if you want it clearer.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Really.
If they want to know after that, they can check. But that way, it makes it clear which solar farm we're talking about. I think there's only one, but.
I don't think any of them that have come through the planning board have ever been built.
All right, are there any more corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the minutes, approve the minutes as amended?
I motion, we approve the minutes as amended.
Bob seconded it? All in favor? Okay, I gave you all some, whoops, I thought, a little, couple of pages of. For one thing, I didn't, I had told you I was going to send a, or get in touch with the code, I mean, the town attorney about a couple of questions, which is on the second page. But over the holiday, I had company and whatnot, and I just didn't do anything. And then I, at the select board's meeting, I think it was Thursday night, they asked that town committees and boards and departments be cautious with their budgets and not spend unnecessarily. So I'm, I am going to send those questions. Instead of going to Ben, I'm going to do the legal department at MMA, because they're perfectly capable of answering it, and it doesn't cost us anything. So let's flip to the second page on the questions first. One of the discussions we had was about, should we have a timeframe for completion of a project, whether it's a conditional use permit or a subdivision? That's one of the questions I believe we wanted to ask. Am I correct? My next question is for us to talk about a little bit, and not necessarily be sent to them, but just for discussion. What are the consequences if, like Craig had suggested, having a one-year time limit? Well, we can't have a one-year time limit on completion when we have in the ordinance two years to commence it, as I've stated a little bit further down. But my question was, what are the consequences if the project is not completed within the timeframe? And if you read further down, you'll see that the ordinance says that if the project isn't completed by the time the, this is under conditional use permit, page 54, 123, the fourth paragraph down, 6F2, states that, quote, "The permit shall expire if the work or change involved is not commenced within two years of the date on which the conditional use is authorized." So if they haven't started it within two years, it's a done deal. And what they'll have to do is to come back in and restart the whole process again. So that, so that, does that answer the completion question is my question?
Well, we have a subdivision that was approved years ago, Mike's way down there, that the third phase has not been started at all.
But when they do, they have to come back in for the whole subdivision process.
Is that somewhere in the ordinance now?
If you, if you look in the.
He plans on doing something back pretty soon, and I don't think he realizes he's going to go through that.
Yeah, right here.
He does, yeah.
It's.
Yeah.
No, Dean Beth bought that off of Mike.
Yes, the answer to that question is yes. That, that he will have to submit.
Get free approval, and he can use his old plans and everything?
He can come in, but he's got to pay the fees and go through the process, the public hearing, because that's what the ordinance says. If the, if the project doesn't.
It's not commenced.
Isn't.
Because the permit shall expire, so.
No, I don't. So what you're saying is, if they start the project, they basically have forever to finish it?
Well, they have to.
Well, that's, that's the other.
I don't agree with that.
Yeah, that's the other question.
I think Mike already started that project with a portion of a roof at some point.
Well, but, see, the thing is, is with, like, with the, with the solar farm, remember you and I talked about the Secocas solar farm? They have to downsize because of whatever, whatever the requirements have at CMP. So Craig and I talked about this, and they did commence action within the two-year timeframe. They, no, correct me if I'm wrong in what I'm saying. They cut trees on a private property, so I believe the selectman said to issue a stop-work order. So they had to stop work and correct that. Then they came back and they put in the fence and the trees, the landscaping trees, if you want to call it that, along the roadway. But they haven't finished the project. My, so my comment to Craig was, and I think I might have been wrong, but I, this is what I need your advice on, guys, was that they did not, since they had commenced the project within the two-year timeframe, that they would not have to come back for a conditional use permit. But if his permit that he gave them ran out, then they would have to come back to him and pay his fees. But now that I'm thinking this through a little bit more and talking about this, the ordinance says, is not, well, it just says if it's not commenced.
I don't understand why that commenced would even be in there.
Well, they, it was put in, I don't know how long ago. That's how the ordinance reads.
These are pretty ambiguous, myself.
It certainly is ambiguous. I think that's something we need to look at.
This really only works for some projects. It's not all projects this is going to work for. I mean.
Well, and we, we need to figure out some language.
I think we do.
For, okay, so, so a question to MMA is appropriate, and I can, I can write what we just talked about and ask, you know, for appropriate, I, you know, it's easier to talk with somebody than to necessarily write the questions out, but.
Why wouldn't it be, if it is not completed, why would somebody put commenced in there? I thought, you know, when I first looked at it, I said, well, they all got this wrong, but I have a tendency to, to move over stuff too fast. And I read it again, I saw that says commenced, which leaves it pretty.
Leaves it, why don't we?
Here's the problem.
And how much is called commenced?
Commenced is the beginning of the project.
You go hole in the ground.
I know, right? I know, where I, so they dig one hole.
You're going to cut one tree.
Cut one tree, I mean, this is.
I guess my problem on the completion part is, is it's going to be project-specific. I mean, if I'm going to go.
Right.
And, and put an addition on my building.
Why couldn't that just say completed instead of commenced?
Well, because when you, you can't, let's say I come in and I, and I get an approval for a forty lot subdivision. You're telling me I got two years to build that out? That's the problem.
I'm not saying that.
No, no, but what I'm saying is that they need to be.
Maybe the, the infrastructure, two years to get the infrastructure in.
Well, for the infrastructure, I guess that, that's reasonable. I could live with that.
You can do subdivisions in phases.
So now it's depending on size of something.
So if you had a forty lot subdivision, it wouldn't be a good idea for the, if you're going to approve, if you want the whole thing approved, right, the whole forty lots, I say, yeah, you do have two years to do it.
Okay, all right, that, that's a good idea.
To do just the infrastructure?
You can bring it down to ten lots if you wanted to.
So you're saying that two years to just put the infrastructure in, or two years to complete it with the houses and everything on the?
No, no, the houses, the building permits would be.
With just the roads, putting the roads, the septic system.
Roads, the septic and all that stuff.
Power, water, whatever.
Yeah.
Actually, under, we talked about, about that because remember, Standish got into all that problem. We, you weren't going to allow them to even get building permits until they had the subbase in anyway, right, the, 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 the subbase of the asphalt there. See, Standish, we talked about this, our Standish would allow a building permit for the lot without, without the road being done or the water or anything. And that, I mean, they stopped that. Now those new subdivisions in Standish all have to have the base down and everything, and the water and power and everything before they'll get a building permit.
All the infrastructure, yeah.
So that protects the person buying the lot, because I got tangled up in that one.
Right.
So.
Buy the lot, have a house built and have.
Then you can't sell it, no power and no water, that's what happened out there.
So our notice of decisions on subdivisions, and we're talking about subdivisions now, can I see that notice of decision for bunting, please? I gave it to you earlier. I'm looking for language at the bottom of it. No, 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 no.
I agree with you, Jennifer, I'll give it up.
Commenced.
Commenced feels.
I've got it, yeah, agreed.
Daily approval to completion is whatever.
The one-page thing just says bunting.
They got all this time to do it, then they went back doors and said, oh, that says commenced, not complete.
Right.
There it is, okay.
Right, and completion time should be dependent on the project.
Okay, so, so listen to this.
Okay.
Our ordinance, when we just passed, some, a couple, a year ago, whatever it was, Ben said that this sentence, "The applicant shall follow what has been voted and approved as presented," must go in all notice of decisions. In the last referendum question, we also added this statement that has to go on all notice of decisions. "No permit shall be issued until all the conditions of the notice of decision have been met." So in this instance of a subdivision, if we change our language to say that all the infrastructure, and this would be only in the subdivision section, that all the infrastructure has to be completed within two years, they can't get any permits until it's all been done, any building permits until it's all been done.
They can still sell that lot, but they're not going to get any building permits.
Right.
Until they get that infrastr, I mean.
So, so we need to add.
The one in Standish that they're allowing the sidewalks to be put in as, as they go, which is fine, but I mean, not to have the infrastructure in, and to be able to get a building permit and not be able to sell the house because there's no water, no power, no roads.
Exactly.
No coal, it's really.
Greg, the, how do the, how do people move into their house before the siding's on? Completely finished?
I'm not sure what you're talking about, but that is considered an incomplete house, unless they got a, you know, a temporary occupancy.
But you could get occupancy without the siding on, right? All you need to have is your sink and your water and.
Temporary occupancy.
Yeah, temporary, yeah.
Not either two months or six months.
So you would have to have, that's a good idea, because I'd like to see the houses done, not.
Right.
Well, they have that.
I mean. Because they live in a camper outside there for a while while they're building their house, and they get it all up, and then they get their sink and the toilet and, you know, a functional kitchen and a functional bathroom in there, then they can get a temporary occupancy. As long as its life and safety issues are done, like their handrails on the stairs and their smoke detectors all work and stuff like that.
You said it's either for two or six?
Yeah, that's a good idea, I like that.
Mm-hmm.
And then, and then it's got to be completed within that six-month period.
So they don't just have to commence it within that time period?
Well, what I've written down here is, in the subdivision ordinance, that we add an a, under one of those, probably it would be in the six D, is it? I don't know, somewhere in there, we'll find the correct space for it, that all infrastructure shall be completed within two years of the date of application.
Date of application or date of approval?
Well, you could add that, the infrastructure has to be completed before they can get a building permit.
Well, then we'll have that, that language that I read will be there.
All right.
Yeah, yeah. Well, he just, Bob just raised a question, within the two years of the date of application, or do we want it to be within the date of, probably a planning board approval?
I think approval, yeah.
Date of planning board.
Because he's handcuffed.
Final approval. Okay, all right, that answers that question.
Question.
Yes.
Are they, you're making allowances for those structures which are not completed now and do exceed the three or four-month period? Now, are they grandfathered?
The what?
Are you talking about a house that hasn't been completed?
Right.
Are they grandfathered?
All the houses I've given occupancies to has been finished. So if this was two, over two years ago, it got nothing to do with me, let me, was it?
Yeah, I don't think you can go back on, I mean.
Good, yeah.
Well, that house down by you, that, that has no siding on it, that's probably the one you're talking about, been there ten years like that, yeah.
Some people feel they leave the siding off, they're saving a lot of money, but.
Or not getting taxed on it, but if the town's actually in full boat anyway, then.
I don't know how the town is doing it now, but when I was in there, we only, we didn't allow that much for the siding being off. In other words, it really wasn't worth the hassle, you're better off to have it on, I think.
If he's been there ten years, he is grandfathered, I would guess.
To have no siding on it, that's, that's his own prerogative, I guess, I mean, that's before my time.
Well, maybe, yeah, that's maybe the way, you'd have to go back and, you'd have to go back and look at what the notice of decision was for his house.
Probably wasn't one, it wasn't in the development.
He bought, he bought that, that house was, was that, no.
Didn't it burn?
That house was a timber frame.
Yeah.
And then they timber framed it, I don't believe anybody lived in it, and then, I know the guy who bought it.
I thought it was a house of that first.
Was there somebody living in that first? I don't think he ever finished it.
Yeah.
Peter Charles bought it.
Didn't it burn?
And then he sold it to, I can't think of the guy's name.
I'm looking in a encyclopedia.
And so I know the guy who bought it, and I, that's probably his outlook on doing the siding, if you know of it, because the inside is.
It's probably all finished.
Yeah, it's very nice, he's done a nice, he lost his wife a couple of years ago.
See, this man wants to put on an addition.
He's lost his wife?
See, this man wants to put on an addition, he comes in for a permit.
Well, I guess you could probably work on the siding then, right?
At that point, you could do it probably, yeah.
Yeah, if you were to expand, yeah. That's how Craig could get it.
He won't be able to get an occupancy of his addition without having all the siding on it, on the whole house.
Okay, we solved that problem. Okay.
But that occupancy would only be good for the addition buyer. I mean, he's already got occupancy, obviously he didn't live in the house, so.
He worked for Rick Por for a whole.
All right, we shouldn't be discussing some individuals. All right, let's get back to, okay.
I think we're done.
So let's go back to, we've already determined that we're going to add something which would be in the form of a referendum question for June, and I will run this, and I will run the language through MMA, although sometimes they say you have to run it through your town attorney, if they say that, we'll do that too. Let's go back to the same issue with conditional use permits. Now, to my way of thinking is, if they have a, this doesn't involve infrastructure necessarily. It could be somebody opening a beauty shop or, or somebody selling camps, like Mr. Brown on, on the, he hasn't started his yet, but he's only been in, in April, I think, Donna just told me it'll be a year. So he still has another year to start his business down there, if he so chooses.
Who's that, you know?
Um. Selling them. So let's say, using this only as an example, let's say that he doesn't do this by April of 2026, if he hasn't got the project established. What do we care that he hasn't got it done? If he decides he wants to do it, the ordinance says he has to come back for another conditional use permit. So that sort of handles that kind of a situation.
Right.
We may wonder why somebody takes that long. What is it to us? That's what the ordinance says.
But it says here that they have to come back if it hasn't commenced.
Right, exactly.
Commenced is a real.
Do you want to change the, commenced means beginning, if they hadn't started it?
So if they've dug a hole in the ground to show that they, no, I'm just saying, that to me is a real.
Well, that's a finite on that, I mean, if he commences it at twenty-three and a half months, what, what's he got, forever to finish it?
Well, according to the ordinance.
Yes, exactly.
But if we're, if we're putting forth, or we're discussing ideas to put forth for a vote, then I would certainly say that the word commenced has to come out of there.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Just get rid of it.
What kind of a word do you want to take, use at its place?
Then the project needs to be completed within two years, and if he's not completed within two years, then they have to come back to.
Okay, so change the word commenced.
Right, because it's so open-ended now, what, what Darrell's saying is that.
It is.
He starts it at twenty-three and a half months, and then he's got the rest of his life to complete it.
That makes, yeah, yeah, okay, all right. So that will be our.
Because he can't get his permit to actually start the business until it's completed. By giving him the conditional use from there, doesn't give him permission to start his business until he's finished everything he has to do. I think there's a problem with the applicants thinking, once they get their permit, that they can open the business, like down there on the Beaver Berry Road.
That's why they, that's why, on the Beaver Berry Road, that, that sentence about, "No permit shall be issued," was not in the ordinance.
It was.
At that time.
So it's been tightened up.
But it will be from now on.
Yeah.
But he still, it says, "The applicant shall follow what has been voted and approved," which he has not done. So that is a code enforcement going down to him and saying, look, you haven't done whatever it is you have to do, and if you don't, I don't know whether you've given them a certain timeframe.
I've already done that, yeah.
That, then.
We need to discuss this now.
Yeah, 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 okay, all right.
We're seeing someone else.
Yeah. All right, so we're happy with changing the word commenced to completed, and I'll also run that one by the MMA. Then the next one was on, and this is like the next to the last paragraph, on the question, "How can we approve something if it's not in our land use table?" Ben questioned through Craig, and using the example of solar farms, that we did approve the solar farm, even though solar farms are not listed in our land use table, there are other, there are two different categories, one is other commercial activities, and one is other industrial activities. Now, when we were dealing with the, what was it, the, what are those tall towers? When, the heck are they called, hold on just a minute? I think, and I, and I need to check with Patty on this, I have asked Donna to check with Patty. I thought that with this solar farm thing, that we in fact did, because I, I would, you know, I'll have to go back and look in my old, I did keep my old ordinance language.
Yeah, I thought we did list that.
I could have sworn that we put solar farm, it's just didn't get printed in here. But it was on as a referendum question.
Okay, are you talking about land use table?
Under the land use table, yes. So it would be under the, I would assume, under the number twenty-six, principal commercial structures, because we did add wireless telecommunication towers, and so there's no reason, I, I know we did, I, I remember having it written in, in our other one. So I think it would, just to double-check with ourselves to be sure, I would ask Donna to check with Patty to make sure that it in fact did get voted on, and then we can just write it in here, and.
Are you talking about it was proved at our last, when the townspeople?
As a referendum question, yes, that if solar farms, when we did our rewrite.
Okay.
If solar.
So this is when the public voted on it this fall?
Would it have been in, or when did we vote on the, all those changes? Was it in the spring or in the fall?
It was June, wasn't it?
No, I don't think we did that kind of an extensive thing in June. Just ask Patty, she'll know.
Okay, oh, November?
No, no.
No?
Let's not argue about that, that's, we'll find out. So anyway, if.
Back up a bit, the, now, it says the wireless.
It's already in there.
How's it, how's it stated?
It just lists it as, in the land use table, and where it's allowed and where it's not.
Why, why is communication as a company?
No, 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 it's the towers, the wireless communication towers. Well, we just talked about the towers, the company coming in and want to put a tower up. So the, and I'm assuming just that when we put this solar farm in, it would be in the rural area and in the commercial area, those two areas, not in shoreline, not in aquifer, not in resource conservation. Now, it could be in the village, and not in the village zone. So the two areas that I recall that we, that we wanted solar farms, that they could be approved by the planning board, would be in rural and, and commercial areas.
What would be wrong with having one in the aquifer?
That's up for discussion. I think we only said those two, but that's why we need to.
Because that would be almost a perfect spot for one of those.
For a solar farm?
Yeah, just be shedding water onto the ground.
Hey, if, that's.
You know what I'm saying, I mean, better than a, than a house, or, you know, there'd be no septic systems.
Or we could have it be with planning board approval. Is that what the board, we, we need to find out what was in that language.
I don't know why that, that wouldn't be a, you know, because there's, you know, that one spot down the streets, it's all clear, it would be a perfect ten acre spot for one of them.
But isn't that, is that an aquifer?
Mm-hmm. That's why they.
That's not an aquifer, is it?
It's a wet one's.
Hmm.
I thought it stopped at butchers.
I don't know the answer to that.
Oh, it goes all the way.
Do you give that back?
K E P's all over.
All right, so Donna's going to follow up on that, and if in fact it was voted, we'll see what the, how it was worded. If we want to, if it didn't include aquifer areas, and we want them, we don't mind them being with planning board approval and aquifers, we'd have to put that forth as another referendum question. We can decide that at another time, okay. Have I left anything out of what it was you wanted me to ask legal opinions on? Because I honestly can't remember at all, guys.
That's what I remember, because we talked a lot about completion of projects in a timely fashion.
Yeah, yeah. All right, let's go back to the first page, this won't take long. I, I, at the last meeting, there was some mix-up in communications, and so I think the problem is me, as I've said here. I, you know, for, for a long time, the planning board had a reputation of being anti-business, and I still hear people say that, which is really not true. And I think I perhaps have allowed that to sway some of my decision-making as far as accepting applications. The ordinance says that the applicant has to have the application in two weeks prior to a meeting. And I have sometimes accepted them a week before, I've sometimes accepted them the Thursday or Friday before, if Craig calls me. And, and that's, doesn't give enough, it makes, makes the applicant happy, but it doesn't necessarily give everybody time to communicate properly. So my question to you guys is, number one, I think I'm going to not do that anymore. My question is, do we want to stick to the two weeks, you know, they have to have it in two weeks before, or do we want to make it one week before? One of the things has to be that, like this recent, this application tonight, Craig has to have time to, to review it, and I assume when the applicant comes in, you review it with them, you check to see if they got the deed, the parking, the whatever, all those things. Because we rely upon you doing that, because we don't have any other resource but you, even though you don't work for the planning board, you work in coordination with the planning board. So is a, is a two-week time, you want to keep it that?
Depends on the circumstance too, if it's a subdivision, there's a lot of stuff to do.
No, no, this is just conditional use permits, I'm not talking, there's, subdivisions are something very different. They have ten days before, we don't change that at all. But this is just in the.
I would say it would have to be at least a week.
Are you more comfortable with two weeks?
At least a week, two weeks.
Well, I, I intend to follow what the ordinance says.
If it says two weeks now, we'll keep it two weeks.
It does say two weeks. I went back and checked through it after our last meeting, because I was just curious.
Yes.
And, and I think it makes good sense in terms.
Well, the other thing is too, in years ago, when I was first on the board, all the applications got mailed to everybody. And then I noticed after I became chair, that ninety-nine percent of the time, people didn't bother to open the envelope until they came to the meeting Monday night. So why waste the postage of sending it to everybody if they're not going to, to review it and supposedly quote-quote do their homework before they get here? So that was one of the things about having two weeks, you had time to get it mailed. But do we want to have Donna now mail all the applications to us prior, you know, let's say I say it's two weeks from now on, Craig, it's going to be two weeks before. Do, do you want to mail to, you're going to open to look at them or not? Or do we want to have it that Donna will have, Craig will have approved them, they'll be in the office, and like I come down when she tells me they're here and I pick up my copy? Do we want to each be individually responsible if we want a copy to look at, to come down and pick it up? You tell me.
I think that makes sense.
So she would email?
But.
She would email us?
No, no, she would email and let you know the application is in.
Yes, that's what I mean.
And then if you want it, you come and pick it up.
I would just soon get here fifteen minutes early. I would just assume, get here fifteen minutes early and have fifteen minutes to peruse it before the meeting, 'cause then it doesn't get lost and blah, blah.
The problem is that we don't know oftentimes.
When an application comes in.
That we even have one until I get.
That would be good to get that emailed.
Yeah, if we could get an email to him.
Well, it also, there have been concerns, and rightly so, that I have not gotten the agenda posted, you know, within a reasonable amount of time. So not accepting anything for the two weeks takes care of that too.
Yeah.
So, and I do have to have the agenda out a week in advance, so that, okay, that answered that.
So we'll leave it two weeks.
Yeah, okay. Also, the other issue is, in this same point, Craig receives the application, he thoroughly reviews it to make sure it's complete, the information is correct. As soon as he's confirmed everything is correct, he gives the application to Donna, and then she lets me know the application is in, and the date and time is established for when they're gonna come before the planning board. Is this a problem since Donna is part-time? She's always in here on Mondays, but the other days are variables, so it could go, let's say an application comes in, excuse me, on a Tuesday, a whole week could go by before Donna comes in to get it. How are we gonna, and this is because we are a small town, not every employee is full-time, so we have to find out a reasonable way of handling this so that communication is, you know.
I think the two weeks takes care of that.
Well, it doesn't take care of it as far as, no, it really doesn't. It takes care of, the problem is with Donna only being part-time, and like the example I just cited, if Craig gets an application in on a Tuesday, and Donna is not available until the next Monday for him to give it to her, there's a whole week that's gone by for communication purposes, for me getting the agenda out and getting it to Patty for her to post on the.
So what if he notifies her that it's ready, she wouldn't, you don't wanna work any more than what you're working, Donna, is that what you're saying?
I don't, I'm just putting this up as, we need to resolve it, because it was an issue the last time we met.
Well, if he notified her, and she got paid to come in and put it together.
What do you wanna do?
Who's that?
I come in every Monday, and usually I spend the most hours on Monday, and I usually come back on a Tuesday and finish up everything that needs to be done.
Only that's on the days that we have meetings or on every Tuesday.
I, my workload is pretty consistent, ten hours a week, and I try to maintain that, and I usually do Mondays and Tuesdays. I'm open to having Craig call me at home, I don't live ten miles away, I mean.
I will tell you right now that answering machine is an issue. I think that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I think that, I think that would maybe.
Email.
Judy could email Donna when an application comes in, and you've said it's okay.
Yeah.
And let her know, and then she can come down and we can stop the process. But it needs to be done consistently and not let it sit around for a week or two, 'cause it just blows everything apart if we don't. Are you comfortable with that?
Sure.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, because as I put in here, it's not the responsibility of the CEO or his office to set a date and time for the planning board, so, okay.
But he knows the dates we'd be meeting, or do you set those twice?
No, 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 he, no, no, we meet the first and third, but it's not up to Craig to tell the applicant what day or what time, I mean, it's up to.
Okay.
Right, if you've got three, three other things that's gonna take time, they're gonna wait till the.
Right, yeah. And it's important that whoever, like I said in here, I use the term "me" in here, but I'm talking about whoever might be the chair. The chair has to keep control of the agenda, so you can't have just people willy-nilly saying it's gonna be this day and this, whoever the chair is. So anything else in that line of discussion? Are we all sort of clear on how we're gonna do this? So the salient points are that we will, I will stick to the two weeks, that when an application comes in and Craig has gone over it, and that it's fully completed and accurate, he will, if Donna's not in the office, he or his, or Judy will email her and let her know, and she will come, come down to the office, and she and I can talk about putting it on the agenda kind of thing.
Excuse me, who's the one that contacts the applicant to let them know when they're on and when to be there?
Donna does.
Donna will?
Because she's, she will have received the application from Craig, and Judy, or however they decide to work that, and then Donna will call me and we'll set the time and date.
And then she'll call the applicants and let. Joyce and I cars communicate often.
Mm-hmm.
We have to.
Right.
'Cause I'm part-time.
Anything else? Have I covered everything? I tried to make it, I think we can start the new year off on a, so we're all together kind of thing, and I think it's best if we all know where we stand, what our responsibilities are, and it truly was my fault that this mess happened, so my apologies to you guys, and we'll be a little bit tougher from now on.
I'm willing to take some blame, too.
No, no. All righty, anything else? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
There is, I made a motion to adjourn.
Bob made a motion to adjourn, is there a second? Pete seconded, all in favor. Thank you all, and we will see everybody on Tuesday, the twenty-first, because Monday, the twentieth, is the holiday, and at this point in time will be a public hearing for Mr. Morales, and we'll wait and see if anything else comes in.
You want this one back?
Yes.
No, I want it.